I like your fish. It sounds like it absolutely greets.
Yeah, it looks similar to the last time. Our guy is Chris Crane.
Is anybody there?
I can hear you.
Okay.
Is that you, Mark?
Hi.
Hey, how's it going?
Okay, good.
Good. I saw they got the trusses up over at the house, the Habitat House.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I haven't been working on that recently, but yeah, they got the trusses up. I assume that they'll be roofing it fairly soon.
Yeah, I drove by. It was like three or four days ago. They were putting the sheathing on the roof, so probably be
Okay, good.
They're probably already done with getting the shingles on and everything. But yeah, that house has come along.
Yeah, being shut down for a while because of the pandemic. I was surprised they're able to. Looks like they're catching up. Maybe we'll have it ready by this fall anyway.
Perfect.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Okay, it looks like we got about two minutes until 6 o'clock, so we'll we don't have a quorum by then. I think we do now. Potentially, but I'd like to get Cody in here as well, but if we don't by 6 o'clock, we'll wait a couple extra minutes.
Okay.
Okay, it looks like we're at 6 o'clock now. Is Cody here yet? Did Cody say whether or not he was gonna be here?
He did not inform me, but I don't see him here yet.
Okay, we can wait an extra minute or two, just in case he's a little bit late.
You do have a quorum now.
Yeah. It was good to get underway with everyone here, though, if we can. We'll give him one minute.
Oh, keep going.
Okay. I gave him a minute. He hasn't showed up yet, so we'll get underway since we have a quorum. So I'll call the meeting to order. We'll start off with real call.
Brent Bybee.
Here.
Betty Cornet is not here. Bruce Lavier. Mark Popoff.
Here.
Jeff Stiles.
Here.
And Philip Mosher.
Here.
Okay. Next up is approval of the agenda. I have a, an amendment that I would like to make for the sake of time. I know that the folks that are here for conditional use permit 194-20, rather than make them wait through the hearing. Oh, hey, Cody. So with Cody present here now, I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda to here conditional use permit 194-20 prior to appeal 030-20 of subdivision 74-19. So I'll make that motion. Would anyone like to second it?
I'll second it.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye and say, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous, so we'll hear the conditional use permit first. But next is approval of the minutes from the June 18, 2020 hearing. Do I have any folks that have any concerns or?
Brent?
Yeah?
The limits were incomplete yet.
Oh, they weren't? Okay.
They're not yet.
Okay. So are we gonna skip over, skip over that? I'm not hearing anything from staff. Okay, so we'll skip over approval of the minutes since we're, it's a continuation, right? Is that why?
Oh, no, there was just other work this wasn't able to get down with. There are other meeting schedules.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. So we'll move into public comment.
Brent, if I may interrupt. Before we get to that, I have a couple things to disclose.
I, here, Philip, would you, would you like to do that during the hearing? Because I, I mean, if you'd like, you can continue, but I think it's hearing specific, correct?
That's correct. Yeah, okay, I'll do that.
So we'll move into the, the public comment portion of the hearing. Is there any public comments for anything not related to what's being heard tonight? And feel free to unmute yourself and speak up or raise your hand so staff can see it. There's a little icon where you can raise your hand. I'm not hearing anyone jump up. I'll give you 10 more seconds. Okay, I, I'm not hearing anything, so we will move out of public comment. And we will move into the quasi judicial public hearings portion of the meeting. Let me get to my agenda real quick. One second, sorry. Okay. Now is the time specified for the planning commission to conduct the hearing regarding conditional use permit 194-20. Due to ongoing COVID-19 health crisis, the city's public hearing procedures for tonight's quasi judicial hearing have been amended. On April 15, 2020, the governor issued executive order number 20-16 titled Keep Government Working, ordering necessary measures to ensure safe public meetings and continued operations by local government during coronavirus outbreak. On June 26, 2020, the Oregon Legislative Assembly passed House Bill 4212, which allows local governments and other public bodies to hold virtual meetings so that they can continue to provide essential services and make decisions in a public and transparent manner while preventing the spread of COVID-19 and protecting public health. Consistent with the governor's order in House Bill 4212, the city has implemented the following procedures for tonight's public hearing. This meeting is accessible to the public via Zoom and access instructions were provided in the agenda packet that is posted to the city's website. The land use application and all related documents, including the applicable criteria, were posted to the city's website for public viewing. All written testimony was timely posted to the city's website for public viewing and also transmitted to the planning commissioners so that the testimony could be considered in a timely manner. The procedures for providing live testimony at tonight's hearing are as follows. You must be recognized by the chair before providing testimony. The participants in tonight's hearing are currently muted and will be unmuted when called on by the chair. If you have logged into this meeting from your computer and you would like to testify, please raise your hand using the icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen. The chair will call on you either by your name or whatever designation appears on your Zoom screen. Planning staff will be assisting the chair throughout this process. If you are calling in from your home or cellphone, please wait until we have called on everyone that is logged in from their computers. Those who have joined using their phones will be asked if they wish to speak next. We ask everyone be respectful and limit background noise and not talk over each other. You must state your name and address before you begin speaking. Please speak slowly. I will open the hearing with a staff report. The purpose of the staff report is to further identify the applicable criteria of the case being considered and to provide background information about the case. I will then ask if the applicant or anyone from the public would like to testify. The commissioners may ask questions of staff, of the staff and applicant during the hearing. During the hearing, some more important standards apply. First, those who testify must hold their testimony to review criteria, which is detailed in the staff report and the notice of public hearing. Second, failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the commission members and the parties an opportunity to respond to that issue precludes an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Do the commissioner's staff, applicant, or repellents have any questions? I do not hear any. Have any members of the commission had any expertise, contacts, conflicts of interest, or bias which would not allow them to render an impartial decision on this matter?
Brent. Brent, Jeff Stiles, I am associated with a property just east of the designated property.
Okay. So you're a neighbor. You own a property next door to the property?
Correct.
Okay. Do you feel you can make an unbiased decision?
Probably, yes.
Okay, do you feel the need to recuse yourself or?
I go back and forth, but no.
Okay.
Can I just confirm for the record that there isn't any financial relationship? If you can hear me.
He's still muted, Jeff.
Sorry, there is no current financial relationship.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Does anyone participating in tonight's hearing wish to challenge the qualifications of any members of the commission? I'm not hearing anyone. Remember to unmute yourself if you do. Okay, and then for those folks who aren't muted, please make sure that you are muted. In case we get some feedback, I think I hear some currently. The public hearing is now open. May we hear the staff report?
Thank you, Chair Bybee and planning commissioners. I'm actually going to be presenting the staff report for Riley Marcus tonight. As you stated, the property is located at 701 East Second Street, and it is currently owned by Full Circle, which is Tom in Hollywood. Tom is actually unable to make it to tonight's meeting and did send a statement that I will read after preparing or after presenting the staff report. In 2007, the, there was a site plan approval for a mixed-use site that included Taco Del Mar and some retail uses. The reason that this application is before you tonight is that we require that manufacturing, light manufacturing and packaging is a conditional use permit. As you read in your staff report, the conditions, all criteria, is either met or can be met with conditions of approval, specifically with regards to impact. Most of the conditions of approval that are requested do deal with impact such as noise for noise across a property line, lighting impacts, dust and particulate matter, odor, vibration. And staff is actually recommending approval of the submitted application with the seven conditions of approval. In addition, Tom Wood did provide a statement today stating that Wood Spirits, which is the actual distilling portion of this business or the name of the business, is a business of Full Circle, which owns the Madison Square Building and River Tap Restaurant and Pub. Full Circle has received a basic permit to become a distillery. The intention of this request actually was for a change of use to a distillery. However, since, since he's actually started the process, he has found that he may not be distilling at this location in the near future. He talked with staff. We decided to go ahead and have him proceed with the conditional use permit because we were already in the notification process, as well as it would get him an approval to, to do that in the future. The OLCC, and Tom had stated also that the OLCC does not allow a tasting room unless you actually have a designated distillery. Federal government requires each distillery produce at least a gallon of spirits a year. The actual work that will occur at the Madison Square Building will be research and development, which will take up a volume of the existing spirits and blending them to taste. Once he determines the correct blending ratios, they'll have a product that they'll be available on site, and it'll be finished there. So basically, packaging will be what and labeling. The facility that will be doing the production is actually in Harrisburg, Kentucky, which is actually where he's at now. And after the bottled finished product is complete, finished cases of the bottle will be shipped to the Madison Square Building and volumes appropriate to support just a tasting room at Madison Square. And that's all that staff has. Do you have any questions of staff?
I'm not hearing anyone jump up for questions. So there was no the applicant wasn't gonna present tonight. He's not present. Is there any, is there any public testimony that anyone that, anyone would like to provide tonight? So if you're a member of the public, please remember to unmute yourself or get our attention somehow. Let us know that you'd like to provide testimony for this. I'm not seeing anyone jump up. Okay. So there are no questions. Do any of the commissioners have questions for staff at all at this time? I'm seeing head shakes. Okay, so now we will close the hearing. Now is the time for planning commission to deliberate. Is there anything that the commissioners would like to deliberate about? Seeing Cody shake his head, no. Bruce? Nope. Jeff? No. Philip?
Nope, thanks.
Yeah, Mark?
No.
Okay. Do you folks feel like you're ready to make a decision on this application? Seeing nods, yes. Okay. Okay, would anyone like to entertain a motion?
Sure, I motion, we, I motion we move to approve conditional use permit 194-20 with the conditions presented by the staff.
Okay, and I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay. It's unanimous, so it's approved.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Don. Okay. One down. So now we will move into the next hearing, which is a continuation. Now is the time specified for the planning commission to conduct the continuation of the public hearing to consider appeal number 030-20. Were you trying to get our attention? It sounded like someone was unmuted. Number 030-20, an appeal of the administrative approval of subdivision 74-19. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 health crisis, the city's public hearing procedures for tonight's quasi judicial hearing have been amended. On April 15, 2020, the governor issued executive order number 20-16 titled Keep Government Working, ordering necessary measures to ensure safe public meetings and continued operations by local governments during coronavirus outbreak. On June 26, 2020, the Oregon Legislative Assembly passed House Bill 4212, which allows local governments and other public bodies to hold virtual meetings so that they continue to provide essential services and make decisions in a public and transparent manner while preventing the spread of COVID-19 and protect, protecting public health. Consistent with the governor's order in House Bill 4212, the city has implemented the following procedures for tonight's public hearing. This meeting is accessible to the public via Zoom, and access instructions were provided in the agenda packet that is posted to the city's website. The land use application and all related documents, as well as the applicable criteria, were also posted to the city's website for public viewing. All written testimony was timely posted to the city's website for public viewing and also transmitted to the planning commissioner so that the testimony could be considered in a timely manner. The procedures for providing live testimony at tonight's hearing are as follows. You must be recognized by the chair before providing testimony. The participants in tonight's hearing are currently muted and will be unmuted when called on by the chair. If you have logged into this meeting from your computer and you would like to testify, please raise your hand using the icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen. The chair will call on you either by your name or whatever designation appears on your Zoom screen. Planning staff will be assisting the chair throughout this process. If you are calling in from your home or cellphone, please wait until we have called on everyone that is logged in from their computers. Those who have joined using their phones will be asked if they wish to speak next. We ask everyone to be respectful, limit background noise, and not talk over each other. You must state your name and address before you begin speaking. Please speak slowly. Everyone who wishes to speak will have five minutes. After I open the public hearing, we will hear from staff. After we hear from staff, we will ask the repellents if they wish to present testimony. The commission members may ask questions of staff and the repellents during the hearing. We will then hear from the public. If you have previously provided testimony and you don't have any new testimony to provide, we ask that you please refrain from testifying at tonight's hearing. During the hearing, some important standards apply. First, those who testify must hold their testimony to the review criteria, which is detailed in the staff report and the notice of public hearing. The review criteria at, criteria at issue in this appeal is the Dow's Municipal Code Title 10, Land Use and Development, Article 9.040, Subdivisions and Major Replatts, and Article 5.020, RH High Density Residential District. Second, failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the commission members and the parties an opportunity to respond to that issue precludes an appeal to the land use board of appeals based on that issue. Do the commissioner's staff, applicant, or repellents have any questions? Just a reminder, please mute yourself if you haven't. And if you do have questions, unmute yourself. But I'm not hearing anyone jump up. So have any members of the commission had any ex parte contacts, conflicts of interest, or bias which would not allow them to render an impartial decision on this matter?
Yes, I have.
No.
Okay, so I hear no from Mark. And then Philip, would you like to elaborate?
Yeah. Since the last meeting, I was asked by a client to show some Curtis developed homes, Curtis Development Homes, and signed a referral agreement in order to do that. That sale does not look like it's going to happen, but I feel it's important to disclose that nevertheless. I also did have an expert contact. One of the neighbors in the area called me to get advice on the value of his home. And when we were there, there was a conversation about the development also ensued, and another neighbor joined us.
Okay. Do you feel that you can make a unbiased decision tonight? Or do you feel the need to recuse yourself?
I personally, personally feel that I could make an unbiased decision. However, to keep this clean and appropriate, I do think it would be appropriate for me to recuse myself from the case.
Okay.
And I'm happy to answer any more questions in that regard.
Okay. Was there anyone else that wishes to state whether they've had any ex parte contact or conflicts of interest or bias? I heard Mark say no, and I'm not hearing anyone else jump up. So just a reminder, Philip, if you recuse yourself, that means you can't participate in discussion or vote on anything during, during the hearing.
Yes, I understand that.
Okay. Okay, I'm not hearing anyone else jump up. Does anyone participating in tonight's hearing wish to challenge the qualifications of any members of the commission? And if you do, please remember to unmute yourself. I'm not hearing anyone jump up. Speak up. So we'll move on. Okay. The continuance of the public hearing regarding appeal number 030-20 is now open. May we hear from staff?
Brent, can I just, just really quick, I just wanted to inform the commission that Chris Kreen, Barry Elsner, attorney Chris Kreen is here tonight on behalf of the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
If I may, for this evening, you know, this was a continued public hearing, and there were two items that were discussed, and staff has given direction on return this evening. One was condition number eight, the other was condition number 23 from your packet of June 18. The condition number eight referred to the traffic impact study. We've had materials that were distributed to the commission before tonight's meeting. Did you receive the memo from Mr. Chandler and the attachments? Did the commissioners receive that?
Yes, I received that. Bruce, did you get that? Steve says yes.
Yeah.
I received the one about 197 in Fremont.
Did you get the, I think there is a first one that was just kind of a brief memo, and then the second one that went in a little more in depth.
Right. But only that intersection.
Well, there should be a memo from Kittleson and Associates Traffic Engineers.
Yes. And Cody, I saw you shake your hand. You got that one. Did you have time to review that?
Yeah, I read it minutes before the meeting.
Okay.
So I'm going to let Mr. Chandler and our city attorney, Dale McCabe, speak to the traffic memo. Staff contacted Kittleson and Associates. They were the traffic firm that prepared the city's transportation systems plan a few years ago. We contracted with Kittleson to essentially perform a third-party peer review of the DKS traffic study, S, the applicant's traffic study. In addition, they also reviewed the memo that was prepared by H. Lee and Associates, which was the engineering firm retained by the, by the repellents. And staff has also had a phone conversation with traffic engineers from ODOT to discuss the intersection. That was part of the description, part of the conversation, the last, your last meeting, Highway 197. So what I'd like to do is, if we could just briefly walk you through that memo, and if you have that in front of you, we essentially took the items that were, that were raised in the H. Lee and Associates memo, and Kittleson responded to each of those, effectively stating that the TSP is correct, effectively stating that the traffic study performed by DKS is also correct and to industry standards. Mr. Chandler, do you have anything to add before we ask the city engineer to open the memo a little more detail?
I, I mean, I can provide you a little bit, you know, as Steve mentioned, multiple documents were looked at with Kittleson Associates as well as ODOT, traffic impact study, transportation system plan, the Dow's policy for traffic impact studies, the memorandum from H. Lee and Associates, all of these, there was questions raised at the last meeting. So we, Kittleson Associates went through and provided the memo that's in front of you, hopefully in front of you, was sent out around, I don't know, two or three o'clock this, this afternoon. I can kind of go through a little bit of it, and I may, you know, lean on Dale a little bit. I think I can handle some of it. He may cover issues on a critical crash. But essentially, the, you know, as Steve mentioned, the Kittleson Associates, you know, confirmed that the, the impact study was done to industry standards as well as the city of the Dow standards. You know, going through here, kind of there are some bullet points about study intersections. Those were, you know, questioned as to why, you know, studying intersections were the way they were. The city's policy for impact studies, it does not specify study areas, and it leaves the scope open to the city engineer. And the intersections for this impact study were, were selected by the city engineer and the public works director. They, Kittleson Associates, based on their review, the impact study is appropriate and consistent with general industry practice. Something else that we touched on, it's been brought up multiple times, the questioning of traffic volumes. PM peak hour, as stated in this memo, what staff has been saying, PM peak hour is the most appropriate time period to count traffic, traffic counts that were then collected in our TSP that were provided by Kittleson Associates in 2017, found that of all the counts collected, I think 31 intersections throughout the city, all of those counts came back to show that in fact, the PM peak hour was the peak hour for the city of the DOWs. You know, even more specifically for this study, the intersection of Thompson Street and East 10th Street experienced the peak hour during the hours of 5:00 PM and 6:00 PM. Furthermore, as mentioned, you know, they bring up the fact, staff brought this up in the, in the past staff report, the ITE trip generation manual also lists PM peak hours as having more trip generation than AM peak hours. Seasonal variations were discussed in the memo, and they also touch on the fact that DKS provided a sensitivity analysis. That sensitivity analysis was used to manipulate the numbers essentially to add more traffic volume to these intersections to find out when these intersections would fail. And they found out that even if increasing these intersections to 160%, they still operate under city standards. There were some questions brought up about area growth assumptions, excuse me, from the TSP. We were able to get some additional information from Kittleson. They also provided us with, you know, a spreadsheet of the numbers that were collected for what are called transportation analysis zones, TASs. These TASs are used in all communities to essentially, for, for growth purposes. It does, the TASs reflect a planning assessment. They're not binding. It does not impact the underlying zoning, and it does not restrict specific properties. Since development occurs in other places faster than, some places faster than others, TSPs are updated every five to 10 years to essentially update these growth assumptions. Broke it down further to say that 80 units is approximately 23% of the 350 housing units assumed for the area southeast of Thompson Street and Old Duffer Road. And it also, you know, kind of correlates with the fact that this, those 80 units would be coming at about 25% into the TSP planning horizon. So kind of in line there as well. Obviously, they, Kittleson Associates describes it a little more in detail than I have. When it gets to critical crash, I think I'll turn that over to Dale McCabe, our city engineer. He can provide what Kittleson said, as well as some, some additional background into critical crash.
Good evening, commissioners. So part of the discussion regarding the critical crash rate was, you know, was brought up at the, the last meeting, whether Highway 197 in Fremont was more of a rural intersection compared to what was considered an urban intersection for the analysis and that critical crash rate number that was a result of, of studying it as an urban intersection. And so further discussions with both Kittleson and Associates and ODOT, the intersection of 197 and Fremont was studied as an urban intersection because you have to compare that intersection to other intersections within the study area. And there are no other rural intersections within the study area for the TSP. Therefore, if it was studied as, as a rural intersection, there was nothing to compare the crash rate of that intersection to other comparable intersections within, within the study area and within the city. So therefore, it had to be evaluated as a urban intersection rather than a rural intersection. The other intersections that it was compared to were like Brewery, Brewery Grade Overpass and Highway 30, the on and off ramps. At the Brewery Grade Overpass, also at 197, and also at 197 and Highway 30 intersections. So again, those were the comparable intersections that, that it compared that intersection with. And it was, you know, the, the critical crash rate for that being compared as urban, an urban intersection was, you know, it had that elevated number. But in discussions with the ODOT and with Kittleson, you know, it was studied in the TSP as improvements that should be made to the intersection. And there are improvements that are slated for the project for that intersection, such as potential safety enhancements for a, a earlier project. For a earlier project is to include sign upgrades, rumble strips, and dynamic message signing. And there is, that project is stated in the TSP. And let's see, during the TSP development, it was noted that ODOT's All Roads Transportation Safety, which is called the ARTS program, had been programmed for the sign upgrades at the intersection to address some of those safety intersections. So that is a project that will be happening to that intersection through that ARTS program at some point in the future. That will be determined by ODOT when that will happen. And then the ultimate big project or the ultimate fix for the intersection was to look at creating a structured overpass over the intersection with on and off ramps coming off of that structure down to 197. But, you know, with discussions with ODOT, there was the email that we received from from them that said that the Grove subdivision proposal is an off-system from an ODOT access management perspective and currently zoned appropriately. And ODOT does concur with the revised traffic impact study from DKES that was dated June 3, 2020. I guess that's all I have on that for now.
Okay. Was there anything else from staff that you wish to provide?
Mr. Chair, we also have Mr. Chris Current here this evening as one of our legal counsels. And he's available to comment on this as well, if you'd like to hear from him now or later.
We can hear from him. Is there anything you want to say right now, Chris?
Just mostly to introduce myself for the commissioner's benefit. I'm an attorney in Portland. I've been doing land use for about 25 years, starting with, in Salem, with the legislature. And for the last 15, I've been working with Barry Elsner. And we only represent cities, counties, special districts, local governments, in other words. So I've done a fair amount of land use work over the last 25 years. I've read through all the materials. I appreciate staff's thorough and comprehensive summary of the additional materials. The only thing I would note is that I understand the record was closed at the last hearing. So you want to make sure to reopen the record, and you can either reopen it broadly for any new evidence and testimony or limit it to the transportation issues as however you desire to move forward. But I wanted to make sure to at least touch on that procedural issue. Otherwise, I will be here for your, if you, you know, to the extent you have questions, I'm here to help.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. And I think for the sake of public participation, because we'd like to get as much as we can, we're going to open it up to public testimony as well. So thank you for that recommendation, Chris. And if there's nothing more from staff, would the appellant's attorney like to speak next? Mr. Marash.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Great. Well, good evening. Steve Marash with Land and Home in Vancouver. I previously worked at Schwab Williamson in downtown Portland, not very far from Barry Elsner. I too have been practicing land use law in both Oregon and Washington for, I don't know, 25 or so years. So thank you for reopening the record. I will keep my comments brief. I have reviewed the memorandum that was submitted today, the traffic memo from Kettleson. I'm not an engineer. I'm an attorney, and we haven't had time to have our engineer review this. So of course, we would like to be able to do that. That'd probably take a couple of weeks. In reading the memorandum from Kettleson, it seems to me like it's more of a rationale for why they don't need to do a safety analysis or further study of the intersections that Hon Lee pointed out in his memo. They went through and they rebutted. They said, well, you know, he said this, this, and this. And so because of these reasons, we don't have to do any further study of the safety. So, you know, obviously, we disagree with that. We'd like to see the intersection studied in detail. I also noted in the memo toward the end, it looks like they almost acknowledged some safety issues were identified in the TSP. But then, then the memo goes on to say, well, you know, because of Dolan and proportionality, you know, we can't do anything, which is not how I read Dolan when you've got a pure safety issue. And even if Dolan did apply here, I don't see anything that approaches the level that's required under Dolan to do the proportionality analysis where you balance impacts versus impacts of the development versus the, you know, the cost of doing some improvement. And it doesn't look like they've even done any detailed analysis of that intersection to see, you know, is there something that could be done short of maybe, you know, the overpass that might address the safety issue. So we don't feel like the issues have been adequately addressed from a transportation perspective. And I don't want to rehash all the issues we raised in our appeal. I'll just refer to those, refer to my prior written letters. But I did want to address one point in the staff memo where they say that the planning commission is not authorized to review final engineering plans. And I wanted to clarify, we're not, we're not asking for final engineering plans in our issues, particularly the issue with respect to the 60% log coverage, the setbacks, the driveway, landscaping, and parking. We're not asking for final engineering of those things. What we're asking for is more detail on the preliminary plans. Because if you recall, the preliminary plans, they show some building envelopes, but there's no calculations for how big those are or how big the rest of the landscaped areas, which has to be at least, you know, 40% undeveloped, 60% developed max coverage. But the max coverage also has to include parking spaces and driveways and things like that. Those aren't shown at all. And so again, we're not asking for final engineering of that. We are asking for more detailed preliminary plans. And with that, if there's any questions, I'll just refer to my prior letters because we believe there's some issues in those letters haven't really been addressed. Sidewalks is one, the physical constraint permit is another. But unless there's any questions, I'll just leave it at that because I mean, we had a long hearing last time, and I'm sure you're ready to get to deliberation.
Are there any questions from the commission for Mr. Marash?
All right, thank you.
Not seen anyone speak up? Okay. Okay. So since the record's open, we'll now hear from the public. Reminder that if you have previously provided testimony and you don't have any new testimony to provide, we ask that you please refrain from testifying at tonight's hearing. But if you would like to, please unmute yourself and make yourself known, say your name and address for the record. I'm not hearing anyone speak up. If you'd like to speak, haven't had a chance before, please speak up. Okay. So we'll move on. As explained at the beginning of the hearing, we will first call on those individuals who have accessed tonight's meeting from their computers and have had their hands raised through Zoom. Reminder, there's an icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen. Also, so that was for folks that are on Zoom. We've already done that. Folks that have called in, is there anyone that called in that has not previously provided testimony that would like to provide testimony tonight? And I'm not hearing anyone speak up. One, twice. Okay. So we'll close the hearing now. Now is the time for the commission to deliberate. Is there anything that the commissioners would like to discuss? And remember to unmute yourself if you do. Bruce?
Thanks, John. I'm in pretty good shape.
Okay. Jeff?
I do have a couple issues. One, I thought last time we were talking about looking at the intersections of 12, 15, 12, 10, and Thompson, 10 and Thompson, and 12 and Thompson. And recalculating those, I saw in the document that, you know, adjust for seasonal conditions, but we don't know exactly what that is. And we also had conversations about sidewalks, possibly attaching to Thompson and what effect that might have on the builder or on the city. So those were a couple of issues I still find unresolved.
Okay. Cody?
I don't have anything.
Okay. And Mark?
I've got a couple of concerns. I guess one is partly addressed by the Kettlesons' report on the intersection of Fremont and 197. The other one, I don't know if this would really be a issue for denying it or not, but multiple unit housing doesn't seem to sell that well. Someone just completed four row houses on West 10th. I can't remember the cross street, but it's right across from where the Habitat house is going up. And so far, none of them have sold. That might be just because they are missing the price point that people are willing to buy these houses. One of the people that wrote in objecting to it also noted that there was a condominium unit out at Lone Pine that was right on the river and has been for sale for some time. And I think it was, they were only asking like $250 or something in that range. Those were built in the 90s, I think. And that hasn't sold either, which seems rather remarkable considering that there's not much in the way of riverfront property available. And I wonder if developer might want to rethink this and maybe go with individual houses. You could probably even do it with existing lot layout, even though, you know, the smaller lots could only accommodate basically a shotgun cottage. That'd be about the same width as a single white mobile home, but it's doable. The other is, it's just that this is so far away from the, you know, rest of the city infrastructure, including streets, shopping areas, and so forth. I wonder if they're really just kind of premature with this development. I hate to see another development get started and then ends up going bust like the one at the old Wilson School site, which sat empty for a number of years before another developer started building there. And I think Habitat got several house lots there as well. So I just have some reservations about this. If it were closer into town, into the developed part of town, I would say, you know, fine, go ahead. So anyway, that's my comments about it.
Okay.
Still there?
Yep. Yeah, thank you, Mark. Okay. Is there any other deliberation from the commission? Okay. Does the does the commission feel that they're ready to make a decision at this point?
Mr. Chair, this is Chris. Just jump in real quick with a couple of procedural points before you move to any kind of vote or finish your deliberation. As you know, this is a quasi judicial proceeding, so your decision has to be based on the approval criteria that are listed in the staff report that come from the city code and the evidence that's in the record. And your decision has to list all of those criteria and explain why the application does or does not meet those criteria. The initial decision from staff was that it did meet the criteria, and the staff report explains why the application does meet all the criteria by reference to evidence in the record. If for some reason you do, you believe that one or more of the criteria are not met or that the evidence just isn't there on one of those, it would be helpful to staff if you could identify what that criteria is or what those criteria are and why you think that the evidence does not show that the criteria is met, because they're going to have to go back and write the findings. And so we need to, we need some guidance. We'll need some guidance on why you, what criteria is not met and why you think it's not met. And then we can write the findings and bring them back for you guys to approve.
Okay. Thank you, Chris, for that reminder. Okay. So yeah, that's a good reminder. If you folks do, you know, whichever way the commission votes, if we approve it, you know, we approve it based off of staff's staff report that they supplied. But if we do deny it, then we need specific sections that the commission believes there was not enough evidence. So be sure that if you do make a motion, that you cite those sections specifically. Does the commission feel they need to deliberate anymore after that?
No, I'm fine.
You're good. Cody? Okay. I'm not seeing anyone else. Okay. Do you folks feel like you're ready to make a decision at this point?
I guess so.
Okay. Cody?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Okay. Jeff? Okay. And Bruce?
I'm ready.
Okay. Would anyone like to entertain a motion? And we're working off of the past staff report that was supplied on June 18th, correct, staff?
Correction, I believe it was provided June 5th is when the publication of the staff report was. June 18th was the last planning commission meeting.
Okay, correct. Thank you. Josh?
Okay. All right, I'll start. I motion, we moved to approve this subdivision 74-19 Legacy Development Group, LLC, with the conditions set forth in the June 18th packet proposed conditions of approval, one through 126 with no changes to conditions 8 and 23.
Okay. It's been moved. Would anyone like to second that?
I'll second it if nobody else will.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded. So my, my voting, go ahead, staff.
We didn't, staff didn't bring any revisions to conditions number eight and 23. Oh, with I thought it, Cody, did you say with or without changes to conditions eight and 23?
I just, I just said with with, with the conditions eight and 23 as they are presented in the June 18th packet.
All right. I apologize. I think Steve and I misunderstood. I'm sorry.
I may have said wrong.
It's better to clarify it now. So. Okay. So it's been moved and seconded. And my voting structure in the past may have been confusing. So would you like us to go one at a time, Paula?
Missed two seconded motion. I'm sorry.
That was Bruce.
Thank you.
And do you want us to go one at a time?
Or show payouts?
Okay. Well, Mark's on the phone, so.
Oh, right. Okay. One at a time is fine.
Okay. So I'll vote in favor.
Okay.
And Bruce?
I'm voting in favor.
Okay. And Jeff?
Voting against.
Okay. And Cody?
I vote in favor.
Okay. And Mark?
I'm gonna vote against.
Okay. So it's three to two. The application is approved.
Thank you. And Mr. Mosher is refused.
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
And just Chair Biaby, a point of clarification. Staff need to return with a resolution. We didn't bring one.
Oh, correct. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah, we'll cover that at the end of the hearing. Okay. All right. So now we move on to the next portion of the hearing, which is the legislative portion to consider Comprehensive Plan Amendment 46-20. Okay. So this is the time scheduled for a public hearing to receive testimony concerning Comprehensive Plan Amendment 46-20 concerning updates to policy number 10 of goal number eight, recreational needs of the Dallas Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 health crisis, the city's public hearing procedures for tonight's legislative hearing have been amended. On April 15th, 2020, the governor issued Executive Order Number 20-16 titled Keep Government Working: Ordering Necessary Measures to Ensure Staff or sorry, to ensure safe public meetings and continued operations by local governments during coronavirus outbreak. On June 26, 2020, the Oregon Legislative Assembly passed House Bill 4212, which allows local governments and other public bodies to hold virtual meetings so that they continue to provide essential services and make decisions on a public and transparent in a public and transparent manner while preventing the spread of COVID-19 and protecting public health. Consistent with the governor's order, the city has implemented the following procedures for tonight's public hearing. This meeting is accessible to the public via Zoom and access instructions have been provided to the public. The procedures for providing live testimony at tonight's hearing are as follows. The participants in tonight's hearing are currently muted and will be unmuted when called upon. If you have logged into this meeting from your computer and you would like to testify, please raise your hand using the icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen. I will call on you either by your name or whatever designation appears on your Zoom screen. Planning staff will be assisting me throughout this process. If you're calling in from your home or cell phone, please wait until we have called on everyone that has logged in from their computers. Those who have joined using their phones will be asked if they wish to speak next. We ask everyone to be respectful, limit background noise and not talk over each other. All speakers are requested to be specific in their presentations and to focus their remarks upon the relevant issues raised by the relevant criteria. I will now open the hearing and ask for the staff report.
Thank you, Chair Biaby. As you all may remember, this is a continued hearing from the February 20th planning commission meeting, which was then continued to the March 19th meeting, which was canceled due to the COVID and statewide shutdown. So we are actually back again tonight. In your packet, I did have Paula include the approved minutes, which gives you a little bit of a detail of the narrative that occurred at the February 20th meeting. And if you all remember, we did not have Scott Baker, who is the executive director for the Northern Wasco County Parks and Rec District, as well as his consultant, Colin McCarthy of Cameron McCarthy, to help assist in some of the answers or questions that staff, or excuse me, that the planning commission had. As stated in the staff reports, the proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendment updates to policy 10 of goal eight. And I provided the amended staff report, which actually does provide a little bit of a different narrative, or excuse me, different verbiage that was used in rewriting that goal eight policy. And staff actually is hoping that I was able to incorporate some of those comments as well with the help of Cameron McCarthy pertaining to the acreage that was the level of service that was mentioned, as well as the questions regarding the NRPA standards and maintaining consistent ratios. Staff is actually recommending approval. And we do actually have Mr. Baker here. Cameron is also here. If you have any additional questions regarding the discussions that were had last time, as well as staff's recommendation. So recommendation is that we recommend that the city council, let me question, approves and recommends to city council the Parks and Rec Master Plan as a background document to volume three of the city's comprehensive plan and recommend that goal eight policy 10 be amended as included in your staff report. Do you have any questions of staff?
Do the commission members have any questions for staff? Nope. Seeing head shakes and nope. Okay. Okay. So yeah, we will, we'll take testimony now. And I see Scott Baker's here. Scott, would you like to go first? Remember to unmute yourself.
Thank you for having us here virtually. We're happy to answer any questions. I think the staff report is well written. The findings are there. So rather than read them to you over again, I just to answer any questions as they come up. And my first time to Colin McCarthy, who is also here. He works for Cameron McCarthy, who assisted us in the development of our master plan. We worked closely throughout the process with the planning department. Staff have shared it with city council, shared it with y'all. And yeah, happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Do the commission members have any questions? No, from Bruce. Jeff?
No question, just a statement. There's not enough pickleball courts.
Cody, I know was primarily you and Sheri that kind of had some concerns last meeting. Unfortunately, Sheri's not part of the commission anymore. But did you have any questions?
I, I don't, based on, you know, reading this when the agenda came out, I don't have any questions.
Okay. You feel like they got addressed?
I do.
Okay. Philip?
No, no questions. Thank you.
Okay. Mark?
Oh, no, not really.
Okay. Okay. So if there's no other questions, is there any other testimony folks would like to provide? Remember to unmute yourself if you do.
No.
Going once, twice. Okay. So now that testimony is concluded, we'll close the hearing. With the, does the commission wish to deliberate at all? Seeing head shakes? No. Cody? No.
I don't have anything to add. No.
Nothing from Mark. Jeff? Okay. Okay. So it sounds like, you know, since we don't, since there is a lack of questions or deliberation, it sounds like the commission agrees with staff's recommendation. Would anyone like to entertain a motion?
Sure. I motion that we approve, that we approve the staff's recommendations and would recommend the city council accept the Parks and Recreation Master Plan as et cetera, as it said in section one and then also section two, within the staff's recommendation.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Staff, does, does that, I know there was kind of some specific language. Does that cover what you folks need?
I heard you. Sorry, John.
That's all right. So the motion is to go with staff's recommendation for recommending that we accept the Parks and Rec Master Plan as well as the goal eight, policy 10 language or verbiage revision.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. So yeah, that was moved and seconded. So let's vote on it. We'll go one at a time. I'll, I'll vote in favor. And Bruce?
I'm looking for my mute, mute button. I, oh, yes.
Okay. And Jeff?
In favor.
Okay. Cody?
I vote in favor.
Okay. And Philip?
In favor.
And Mark?
In favor.
Okay. It's unanimous.
Thank you, commissioners.
All right. Thank you. I'm glad we could wrap that one up from February. Okay. So we're through both the quasi judicial and the legislative hearings. So now we're into the resolutions portion of the hearing. And first we'll cover Resolution 594-20. That's approval of CUP 194-20 for full circle LLC to have a distillery. Would anyone like to entertain a motion on that?
I motion we approve Resolution 554-20.
Okay. And I'll second that. And we'll go one at a time again. I'll vote in favor. And Bruce?
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Philip?
In favor.
Okay. And Mark?
Yes.
Okay. That one was unanimous too. Staff for the, for the appeal, is there a resolution number for that or are we going to have to cover that at the next meeting?
Next meeting.
Next meeting. Okay. Okay. So up next is Resolution 589-20, recommending city council approval of amendments to policy number 10 of goal number eight, recreational needs of this Dallas Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Would anyone like to entertain a motion?
I'll do this one too. I motion, we move to approve Resolution 589-20, recommending city council approval of amendments to policy number 10 and goal number eight, recreational needs of Dallas Comprehensive Land Use Plan.
And I'll second that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. I'll vote in favor. And Bruce? In favor? Jeff?
In favor.
Okay. Cody?
In favor.
Philip? Okay. And Mark?
Yes.
Okay. It was unanimous. Okay. So we're through the resolutions portion of the hearing. Thank you, Parks and Rec, for being here, being part of the hearing. We appreciate you being here. We'll move into the staff comments portion of the hearing.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Your next meeting is July 16th. And at this time, the only item that we do have on that agenda will be the resolution with Legacy Development. There are no public hearing scheduled.
Okay. Do you think it would be best, since that's the only thing that would be on the agenda, to perhaps move it to another meeting?
Well, we would like to continue with this process, Mr. Chair.
Oh, yeah. Get it wrapped up. Okay. I will not be present on the, on July 16th. So I don't know if that messes with anything for you folks.
Bruce, would you be able to be interim chair?
We do need to, we do need a vice chair. We haven't elected anyone since Sheri left.
Oh, right.
Can I interject or ask a question to Chair Biaby? Do you know how long you might be out of town?
I mean, just that week. And then the following week as well. Cause that's, here, let me look at my schedule.
Cause the question I think that's with us that we've been, you know, like all the land use applications in the state that we're dealing with is the state mandated timelines. The applicant has already submitted two 30 day extensions. And it's looking right now that he most likely will have to submit another. That's all up to him to decide. But obviously we would need that document signed before we can move forward.
Okay.
So I don't know. Rest of staff, what we could do.
I will be out of town, but I just realized that we're in the digital age now and we're doing Zoom. So I could probably do it mobily from, if this is the only thing that's going to be on the agenda, I can probably do it mobily.
What if, what if we just did it next week instead, if, if that's the only item on the agenda?
Notification requirements might be kind of difficult to get it out. Yeah.
Got it.
Is there any reason why we can't select a vice chair? We need, we're going to need to do it anyway. So it's just.
Right.
I nominate Bruce. No, 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 no. I've been, I've been around too many years as it is.
Does staff have any, any input?
Well, Mr. Chair, if there is a possibility of conducting a special meeting next Thursday night on the ninth, since that is not a public hearing, there is no public notification required, no public hearing notification. So we could set a special meeting for next week, for the ninth. We was, if you weren't able to make it on the 16th, you know, we would like to, again, complete this process.
Well, I can, I can make it on the 16th. I realize that I can call in from wherever I'm at, or I can, I can do it through my phone as well.
You can zoom in.
But if, if for timeline sake too, if you folks feel like holding a special meeting to get that covered, I, I think that would be an option as well. to get that covered, I think that would be an option as well.
Well, you know, there is a holiday tomorrow at City Hall Observe. And so the earliest that we would be able to publish, distribute the agenda packet would be Monday.
Okay. So let's, let's just hold off on doing a special hearing. Then we'll hold, we'll have it on the July 16th hearing. Just, or, yeah, just to make sure that requirement. So, okay. Were there any other staff comments?
No.
Okay. Any commissioner comments or questions?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Thank you, Mark.
I don't have anything.
Okay. I'm not hearing anyone jump up, so we will adjourn the meeting. Thanks to everyone. Have a good rest of the night.
You, too. Thank you.
You, too.
Good evening.
Yeah. Take care.
Night.
Paula, are you going to be in the office tomorrow?
Well, it's a holiday. I'm hoping to be not in the office.
No.
I don't have the minutes for you to, oh, the resolution. I thought you were going to come down tonight to sign those.
I can do that. Yeah, I can pop down right now.
It's up to you. I'll run, print them out real quick.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just come in right now.
I don't know. Steve's asking what the hurry is. Do you want to wait until Monday? Are you back on Monday?
Yeah, I can do that, too. Yeah, either way, whatever is easiest for you folks. I've been known to forget about holidays and go into work anyways.
I'm sure your employer appreciates that. Fair Labor Standards Board will also be there.
When I'm there and no one else is there still by like nine o'clock, that's usually when I realize, so.
Okay, so I will be in touch with you on Monday.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, folks. Take care. Happy Fourth.
You, too. Bye.